Okay. Let's get this meeting going. I'm gonna go through some of the rules today because we have a lot of people here. So the committee welcomes-
Recording in progress.
The committee welcomes input from the public. Please be aware that we are recording, audio and video. And we have set aside up to 30 minutes for public comments. What I would say is if you were to speak, I think you guys put your name on the list up here. That's great. Address your statements to myself. And please do not read statements written by others. And in consideration of the time, don't repeat the same thing somebody else says. That'd be great. So let's start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. Into the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all.
Okay. No call, please.
Mr. Alford? Mr. Case?
Here.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Here.
Charlotte Crane?
Here.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Here.
Dr. Eberwine? Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Dr. Jelinas? Mr. Locata?
Here.
Ms. Ladizori? Ms. Lowesbury?
Here.
Mr. Stewart? Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. So we're gonna start with responses from the audience before we do the public hearing. So I have a few people here that would like to speak. So how about Amy Growler?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. We can speak loud enough so we can hear you. Yeah, yes. Hi, I'm Amy Growler. I live in Covington. I teach at Kittredge. I'm one of the integrated preschool teachers, which is a very amazing experience. I love my job very much. It's, you know, a ratio integrated means that there's seven students on IUPs and eight students that are peers. And then it's a great model. In some years, we have a lot of high needs and behaviors. And some years, we have not said nothing. This year, well, actually, past three years, we've had some particularly high needs and some big behaviors. So big behaviors like outbursts, you know, physical aggression, property. And I'm saying all of this to you because we have an RBT impact at our RBT in our school for a few years now. And I have heard that the RBT has been cut for next year. And this is a concern for me, but I also know of other students in my school, just my school alone, that our RBT is in my room several times a day to help us. Because when a student might have an outburst, I have 15 students in my class. And so when a kid has an outburst and it gets dangerous, like throwing toys and spitting or throwing chairs, like, we have to evacuate the room and somebody's gotta handle this. Somebody's gotta help the student de-escalate and be safe. And so, and then we have to leave the classroom with the other students and take them somewhere in the school so that they are also safe. So with no RBT, I'm not quite sure who that's gonna fall on because it's less people and it's less somebody who knows, who is trained in this type of thing, right? So they are CBI trained and they're registered behavior technician, which is like some, you know, training towards being a behavior analysis person. So they have a lot of good skills. In theory, right, she's supposed to be down in, like in our school, we have the ABA room. The kids go down and get discreet child reading. Who are these kids who are on the autism spectrum? So one more thing is, so for this year, she is not gonna be with us after vacation. She went and got a job that is more secure somewhere else. So starting in after February break, I will have nobody to come in or to support my principal, who comes in as well, because you have to have two people, somebody for safety. So who's gonna help him? Who is gonna be in the ABA room? She's the only consistent person in that room Monday through Friday. And yeah, so consistency for the kids who go down there and support for the BCBA for doing discreet trials. And it's one student who cannot be in a classroom because there's no room. So he does drop in services in this ABA room. And now she wanna be there to help support him on a daily basis. So I have high concerns about this and I feel very worried. I feel worried from the safety of my classroom and the students in my room. I feel worried for my principal to help out when people get de-escalated, I mean, get escalated. And so does my class. There's a couple other kids in school. And so I'm not quite sure why the behavior, the RBTs are being cut. And I know that the thought, or I think there'll be more SACs of work. But that's different because SAC is a different thing than an RBT. And it's also, just if you don't want an RBT, it's also one less person, which is also an issue in a school like ours where we are, everybody is stretched thin. Everybody is doing everything they can do to make the school run smooth. And we are all stretched really thin and we're working really hard. And it's really tangy on days when people are absent and there's no sense. And I could go on and on, but I know I'm not allowed to take full 30 minutes. So I'll stop here and I say that my concern is for RBT and support within the schools that are not gonna have that anymore. Thank you for your time. Thank you for sharing. Appreciate you coming.
I think I have Liz.
Liz Jackson, CBA president. And I actually wanna talk about the budget. And I'm standing here today because even, even though I truly believe that we're all on the same page in what we want for our students. We all want our students to be safe. We all want our students to be learning and to be happy in their schools. We share that common goal of providing that. Unfortunately, this tentative budget is, right now, as Amy and Cass, we're all running thin on support. And right now, it doesn't seem to be adding the support that people need. We need more, not less. We need more support in our classrooms. We need more support from people working with the behavioral supports. We need STEM classes. We need more reading and math interventionists in our elementary and middle school. We need more. And look, I appreciate the reality of budgetary constraints. But I also understand that if we do not keep funding our top-notch schools, that that can lead to further constraints in the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Beth. Appreciate.
Okay, Callan? Shay?
I'm Callan Keshay. I teach seventh grade at Nescus. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of our Nescus teachers. In the 2023, the 2022-2023 school year, Nescus team leaders met with administrators of our district to discuss the inequity of our student-teacher ratio. We were concerned about our large class sizes. We were told that we would be gradually adding teachers to our staff to lower class sizes. That didn't happen. We did gain a shared seventh and eighth grade ELA teacher as well as a sixth grade ELA teacher in the 2023-24 year, which reduced our ELA class sizes. We've definitely seen the impact. I have seen the impact of our smaller class sizes this year in ELA. However, math, science, social studies has not been affected. And the seventh grade in Nescus core teachers, except for ELA, are responsible for 126 students. Divided between five classes, we have around 25 students per class. These numbers are similar in sixth grade. Our eighth grade is a little bit smaller this year. The projected budget for the upcoming year does not reflect any additional teachers at Nescus, though the conversation that team leaders had with administrators did reflect that last year. We wanna know what our plan is to improve our MCAS scores, especially in math, and to best support our students. In 2023, only 16% of our eighth grade class met expectations on the MCAS, on the math MCAS, which is significantly lower than the state average. We believe that the best course action for our students is the additional math teacher access. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole?
Hi, I'm Nicole Sireline. I am the school adjustment counselor currently at Kittredge Math at Washington. And I just wanted to share something that I wrote and the other school counselors added to. When you look at the proposed cuts for next year, it may not look like much. However, when you really look at the day-to-day tasks that the RBT offers, you will be losing so many services for our students. With the reduction of the RBT position, the SAC positions are not truly increased. The current allocation of school counselors are as follows. The high school has one full-time SAC as well as a half-time SAC. Nescus Middle School has one full-time as well as a half-time. Crainville has one full-time SAC and Kittredge and Beckett-Washington share a SAC. The elimination of the RBT position will shift the half-time position between, Wocona High School and Nescus Middle School will have to be split between Nescus Middle School and Beckett-Washington. So it's a shift, not an additional position. Kittredge Elementary School will have a full-time counselor. Again, there is not an additional position being added, just a shift of a half-time SAC from Wocona to Beckett-Washington. This will leave Wocona down to one SAC who is responsible for servicing approximately 30 IUP students, running DBT skills group, managing crisis situations, and meeting the needs of all general education students who require social emotional support. Realistically, the RBT position elimination will leave a gap servicing our population of students needing behavioral support, as Amy stated. Our RBTs give students movement breaks, help to implement behavior support plans, help with dysregulated students, and are the eyes and ears at recess and lunch to help students with peer conflict in their natural setting. They help carry out the lessons the SAC is teaching. With the removal of these jobs, there is a gap. And who will be able to provide these services? The role of the school counselor is to be proactive in teaching explicit instructions of social skills, implementing IUP 504 services to those with special emotional needs, as well as running rooms and seeing students individually. If the RBT positions are eliminated next year, there will be days where Beckett-Washington has no support personnel. Kittredge will have a full-time SAC, but the needs will be filling in from the RBT. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're gonna have another public comment period after the budget is presented. So I don't know if you wanna wait till then, Tom, or you can go ahead and talk now.
Yes, thank you. I'm Tom Hutchinson, town manager for Dalton. I'd like to start off perhaps somewhere different where I end up. And that is wondering if there's at all the possibility of collaborating on school bus transportation procurement. Right now, all the towns have to do it by themselves. I think it might have better success and be more efficient in the long run if there were a, if there were regional procurement. I'd like to also express that in ways that we may not have thought about because we all know the structural problems of the lack, not the lack, but the insufficient state support for all of the required programs, leading to some cuts that may be detrimental to the district and to our control. It's no surprise that the rise in, in the projected, the preliminary projected budget for the, the operating budget for Central Berkshire is greater than the rise projected for all of the towns' operating budgets in Dalton, at least. And that's probably the same for all towns. And given that that's a structural problem that's only going to, I think, get worse, I encourage us all to look for ways to collaborate in which we, we may be able to save some money to efficiencies, such as school bus transportation. I know it isn't in the operating budget, but that kind of thinking, I think, might help us through some tough times. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Anybody else? Okay. So first up is the public hearing for the fiscal year '25 budget, the budget presentation, which...
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is, this is the tentative budget. We not, not a whole lot has changed since I, we presented this budget last week. A couple things, though, are different about this budget from the initial budget. So this is what we refer to as the tentative budget. In early January, that's when we present to you the initial budget. A couple things that, you know, we work closely with the finance subcommittee, the school committee finance subcommittee. They give us feedback. One of the areas of feedback that they gave us is they really wanted us to be very transparent about the gross. In other words, what it really costs to run the district in full. So it, where it looks like a larger increase from the get-go, and I know that my colleague Greg Bueno will mention this as well, that is because what we actually do is there is a gross of what it costs to run the district. And then we offset that with other sources of revenue. So that is one change, and that's a change in how we present. So just something to keep in mind. We always do, as you know, we have goals. The goals, we do a lot more, and you can hear from teachers, there's a lot more that happens within our schools on a daily basis than what you see with these goals. They haven't changed. It's basically to make sure that we have, we're offering high-quality programming, that teachers have the resources that they need to support high-quality programming, but at the same time, really balancing that with being fiscally responsible to the towns and taking into consideration all our sources of revenues, some which are within our control and, and as you know, some, some which are not.
So this slide shows the true gross revenue that is needed to run the district. So as we move into FY '25, the tentative budget has us at $35,391,797. That is a 5.45% increase year-over-year, or just under $2 million. So this is our gross revenue needed to run the district. This includes revolving funds. This include grant funds and funds from the state and from the towns, so the town assessments. Some of the ways that there are, this budget's increased this year is the largest piece, or one of the larger pieces, is salary increases. So that includes contractual increases and the addition of one FTE teacher at Craneville. This is due to, we're moving into next year. The last few, I think, three or four years, we've had to add a fourth kindergarten teacher. We're planning, we're gonna need a fourth kindergarten at Craneville next year. So this is really needed for the grades one through five where we wouldn't have a shift to be made. Transportation increases, this is our third, going into our third year of our transportation contract. So it's about a $50,000 increase. Insurance premiums, those are set by the Berkshire Health Group. So our active insurance plans went up by, will be going up by 7% this upcoming July. Our retiree health insurance has actually went up by 5.5 this January. We're expecting another probably 5% increase next January. So there's a 5% increase on the retiree health insurance. Berkshire County Retirement, that is set by Berkshire County Retirement. That is the retirement plan for our paraprofessionals, our custodians, pretty much anybody that's not part of mass teachers. So that $63,000 is set by Berkshire County Retirement. Ban interest and premium payment, this is hopefully gonna be our last year of seeing this in our operating budget. We're hopefully gonna be going out for the final bond for the Wocona project next year. So in our FY '26 budget, that'll be reflected in the capital budget. But that is an increase year-over-year of $121,000. The last large piece that we're seeing an increase this year is our special education tuition. That's $765,000. We did have some placements this past year that we have to account for, that were not in last year's budget. We do have some decreases, some of the salary decreases, they come to just under $250,000. That includes our, a 1.0 FTE of a STEM teacher, that's half Wocona, half Nescus, five Title I tutors, and then the two registered behavior technicians. The last decrease that we see in this budget, or large decrease, is the charter school tuition. That is also set by the state. That is going down by $155,000. So if you take those increases and decreases, you'll see the year-over-year change of the $1.8 million does match that we're seeing year-over-year. One of the ways we do try to offset the budget is using grants and revolving accounts. So this slide shows the grants and the revolving accounts that are used for salaries. That includes Title I, additional special needs, the community, coordinated family community engagement grant. It also includes ESER III. And I know we've been talking about ESER III going away for multiple years, that it's ending in FY '25. This does end September of 2024, so this upcoming September. So we do have some salaries moving into next year, put into ESER to help us ease off of ESER III. If you see back in FY '24, we had $1.2 million in ESER III. Going into next year, we're gonna be at $280,000. Some revolving accounts we use are circuit breaker, which is for special ed reimbursement, school lunch, which our school lunch program is self-sustaining. So all salaries, all supplies do get paid out of the school lunch program. And the last piece is preschool revolving. So we have not been touching those funds the last couple of years, knowing that we need to be hitting them this year. So we have $171,000 for salaries coming out of preschool revolving. So this slide includes all of our offsets that are helping us get to where, the number we need to have for, to appropriate for funds. If you see those two green and blue lines, those are the same numbers from the previous slide. So those are the grants we're using in the revolving accounts. Some other offsets we're seeing are, is the FY '24 Rural Aid Grant. So this year, we are prepaying our, some of our special ed tuition at $380,000. And we're also prepaying some of our expenses, about $400,000. The last large offset is our FY '25 Circuit Breaker. That is money that we are bringing in this year for revenue that we know that we have will be using to offset next year's budget. So that number is 200, just over $250,000. So all of our offsets come to about $4 million. So if you take that $35 million number minus $4 million, we're sitting at $31,227,719, which is a 3.06% increase year-over-year, or just under $1 million, at $926,253. These are the funds that are used for town assessments, what needs to be appropriated to run the district. So that first slide is what is needed to run the district. This is what's needed to appropriate to run the district. So we're sitting at just over $31 million. So how are we gonna fund that $31 million? So this slows, shows our preliminary projections of revenue for FY '25. One, one thing that we weren't expecting was that charter, chapter 70 increase of 3.5%. So that's sitting at just, just over $300,000 increase year-over-year. We did see a charter school assessment decrease. We're also seeing a charter school reimbursement. It's much smaller at $15,000, but it is a year-over-year decrease. Transportation revolving, that was set by school committee back in July, $600,000. That is money that was left over last year that we're used to offset FY '25 for transportation costs. The E and D appropriation, that was also finalized back in December. So that is about an increase of just about $12,000 year-over-year. And then town assessments are currently sitting at 3.35.
And this is, these are the numbers that go into what we call the five-year rolling average. And the five-year rolling average is one component of what goes into the individual town apportionments. I'm not gonna read each one, but just a couple things to point out. If you look at Dalton, since 2019, they've gone from 128 students to 137. Hinsdale's gone from 164 to 183. That colored, the highlighted line you see on the bottom is the rolling average. Peru has gone from 86 to 92. Another, another important component to, to point out is that school choice is actually our largest group of students, just behind Dalton.
So this chart shows pretty much the information we just saw on the last screen. So this is from 2015 to 2023 for October 1 numbers.
Well, be careful. You know?
So you can see that the totals year-over-year, that's our top line, the green line. We do have a little, small uptick the last couple of years. So this is our largest enrollment since around 2018. And you can see the bottom blue line is our school choice numbers. So that's been pretty consistent, hovering, it was the highest at 218. It's moving into next year at 218.
So this is the percentage of our district students in each of our schools. For the most part, our schools have gone up between, I would say, five and 10. The exception to that, I would say, Wocona's really maintaining, holding their own. Beckett-Washington has gone down. But as you can see, you can kind of, this is a nice visual of, of the percentage of the entire district that each of our, each of our schools holds. And this, nothing has changed here in terms of certified full-time employees by school. As I've mentioned in the past, this year, the one thing that's in our operational budget is that fourth kindergarten at Craneville School, which we, we know at this point, we really need that fourth kindergarten, which was in the past, we would look at the census data, try to make a decision, but we know we, at this point, are pretty, we need that fourth kindergarten. So this is a comparison. This is something we take seriously, we look at carefully. It's a comparison between our district students and our full-time teachers. I think you're gonna see the biggest discrepancy probably at Wocona. And that's mainly because at the high school level, we have more specialty classes that we offer our students. For the most part, though, it's fairly, it's fairly consistent. I would say we're between 0 and 5% discrepancy between the percentages.
So this chart shows our town assessments, where they're sitting right now with the tentative budget. So as you saw on the previous slide, town assessments are sitting at 3.35. That does range, it's different for each town, that's due to the required local contribution and that five-year rolling average. So some towns are seeing about a 1% increase, others are seeing a 3 or 4, 6% increase. The last piece of the puzzle is the capital budget. This has remained unchanged since the initial budget. So year-over-year, it's a decrease of $3,600. These are our three projects that are currently on the books. One is the Beckett-Washington renovation, the Wocona renovation, and then the Wocona building project. This will be our last year with the Beckett renovation. That does come off the books in FY '25. Wocona renovation, that was done prior to the building project. That'll come off the books in FY '29. And then the full building project will come off in FY '47. Are there any questions? Or would you like to go back to any slides?
Yeah. Any questions from the audience or from the committee? See you, Dave? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You said from the audience, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You were talking really fast. So the Beckett renovation project is off the books for '25 or '27?
This will be the last budget we have, we see that in.
Okay, so '25 will be the last.
Yes, this will be the last one.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Dave?
Yeah, I, I did wanna get back to this increase in town assessments here. This is second year, we're looking, looking at 3.35% this year. Towns are capped at two and a half. Last year, Hinsdale voted down our assessment budget. We did have to go back and redo that after the other towns had, enough of the other towns had voted to, to pass that. And just seeing that this is the second year, I'm just wondering, how do we address this? Right? I mean, our, our budgets are going up more than what the towns can raise for revenue. Towns' costs are going up. It, it seems like at some point, it, it's gonna get kind of unmanageable. So I'm just curious how we address it. You know, obviously, we don't wanna cut staff. We don't wanna cut services. Like, something's gotta give, right?
Well, the one I can add to that, so at finance, that is something they're looking at. This is something, they know that 3.35 could be something that we need to look at. Is there other revenue sources we have to look at?
And that's, that's kind of the point of the tentative budget. So we present the tentative budget, towns, we have a public hearing, towns come, we listen to teachers, towns come to us, and we hear from the public, we hear from all of you. We go back to finance and we have a discussion about the feedback and the needs to, to look at both, to look at the town assessments, to look at what teachers are requesting. And that's, and I mean, there are some things that are, like I said, mentioned out of our control. Things like the rolling average is out of our control. Things like enrollment as of October 1 is out of our control. The state required contribution for towns is really out of our control. And some of that, there's a piece of that, there's a, there's a piece- The state required contribution for towns is really out of our control, and some of that, there's a, a piece of that, there's a, there's a piece of that that has to do with housing assessments in each of those towns that, that again, we don't have control over, but that number is a number that we receive. And there is a fair amount, if I look at it, there is a fair amount of variation between the towns, I would say, if you look at it. It's not with, we, we have the capacity to change the average, but we don't have the capacity to change how the individual towns fall out. So, you know, as, as Greg pointed out, we'll be going back to finance based on feedback that we get from towns and teachers and staff.
Right, obviously, if there's more kids going to a town, they're just gonna have to pay more, I mean, that's, that's a given, but if our budgets are rising faster than what towns can raise for revenue, I think it's gonna reach a breaking point for the towns.
Yeah, definitely, it's something we can bring back to finance and compare, and, and also compare, what I, would be interesting to is compare from, I, I don't think we, do we have it, we don't have it this year, but compare what those percentages are across time, too, we can look at that.
Yeah, thanks. Liz? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. So what I'd like to do is, because we have J S Bryant School here, instead of going through the normal, if anybody has any objections, I'd like to move them up in the order of the agendas. Any objections with that? And I'd like to start with curriculum, I know Ellen is online there, I don't know if you want to introduce J S Bryant, Ellen?
Hi, so we had J S Bryant come in to run our private meetings earlier in the fall to discuss their building of a new school for, for L G B T Q plus students. It's gonna be a private school in Covington, they've already purchased land, and they are developing their curriculum and curriculum and working with, with DECE. So they are here to present their, their plan for what the school will be, and then we will, I believe, vote tonight whether or not we, we are going to, that we're okay with them being in, in our district, existing in our district.
Okay. All right, so Allison, you wanna present?
Thank you. My name's Dr. Allison Druin, I'm one of the co-founders and head of the J S Bryant School. The gentleman that was just making the computer work is one of the other co-founders and chief operating officer, Dr. Ben Betterson. And next to him is Pepper Fonya Scanlon, and director of our, of farming for the J S Bryant School. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm just gonna try and condense one hundred and forty four pages into, into fourteen minutes, okay? And, but knowing full well that if you wanna ask any questions whatsoever, please do, okay? And when you do, and after I'm done talking, my colleagues and I will answer or have discussion with anybody that would like to ask questions, okay? So, okay. J S Bryant School's mission is not just to support the transformation of learning and wellness for students that identify themselves in the L G B T Q plus community that are struggling. They're struggling, they're struggling because of school, they're struggling because of home, they're struggling because of community, and generally, these things manifest themselves in anxiety and depression, partially triggers from bullying, from harassment, for basically telling people who they are in terms of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And so this school would be a private school, a private therapeutic high school in Covington with professional staff that, that have lived experience as well as professional, and more, professional training in supporting these, this kind of learning and wellness transformation for these students. They would also be skilled and trained professionals in, in teaching and, and learning in all of the Massachusetts standards that you know today. And I'm starting my back to you all, and my back to the camera, so that's good too. All right, anyway, so there are people that are struggling, the numbers bear out, and, and they're finding their schools are a challenge. And they're also, and a lot of these kids are in crisis, and they're trying to find help and trying to find support, and they're not finding it, they're not getting open doors. And that's the purpose of the J S Bryant School. I'm flying through here, I skipped a lot of pages, don't worry about it, we can talk later. Curriculum structure, over the last two years, we've had over twenty five people working with us, whether they be educational professionals in, in various disciplines, from math, science, art, communications and so on, to information specialists that specialize in literature that has a focus on the L G B T Q experience, to educational researchers in developing new educational technologies. All that said, plus talking to people in the school districts as well, we've created a bit of a non-traditional curriculum, but weaves in all of the Massachusetts standards as, as we can tell. And the idea is there are five core courses, and these courses grow with the students over time. And these courses are highly interdisciplinary, immersive, project-based, place-based, and bring together students in small cohorts to be learning together. And so they range from environmental activism to community leadership to personal identity, and again, weave together many different areas. You can't see the screen, so creative activation and worldview is also there. So in any case, what will happen is when they start the curriculum, they would start within an exploration mode, moving on to another level of, of building knowledge and building, and building what they know and sharing what they know, moving on to becoming and learning to be leaders in these interdisciplinary areas. And before graduation, if they stay through with us, they would learn to become leaders of impact in terms of their own personal identity, in terms of their, the local community, and in, in national areas, in these learning areas. What is also unique about the curriculum is that, that students would have one course a day, and, and each course that they have, one, one would be different each day of the week, so it would be five courses. We would have seven students in a cohort with a teacher and a learning, and a teaching artist or, or a teaching farmer. And the idea is that, and I know you can't sort of see that very well, but the white area, the white part of the ring is for day students. And our day students, we're gonna start with day students, thirty six day students, and the idea is that they come in in the morning, they are, they have their class discussions, their critiques, they're comparing ideas for prompts for the next lesson and so on. After lunch would be a group therapy, which we call club therapy, where students are, are integrating the learning with their wellness experiences, whether it's in the arts or science or, or active, or active things outside. And then after club therapy, we move into the afternoon of individual and group, like group project work. And from there, while they're doing that, they would be getting pullouts in terms of one-on-one therapy, family therapy, and psychiatry. Again, reminding you that we're integrating the wellness and the learning together, because this is a therapeutic school. And finally, the entire school community would go to the farming campus. They may, some of the classes may be on the farming campus during the day, but some of them would be in the learning and wellness campus as well. So, but the entire community would go at the end of the day to the farm, where they would be doing everything from caring for animals to learning about how to organize a farm stand, to making cheese and trailblazing and so on. So that's the general feel of, of a day and of the curriculum, but I wanna get more deeply, we gave to, all of you, sorry, not me, you guys. But we gave, basically, we went more deeply into two example courses to give you a sense of how the standards were woven into, could be woven into the courses, and really are the backbone of the courses, and how project-based learning and, and also place-based learning would be a very important component of each of these courses. For example, with the environmental activism, you would expect that there would be many different forms of science that would be a part of this course. But it's all, but also part of that is the arts and math and physical education and, and English and so on. So I'm going to give you just one example of, of a project that is actually very place-based. It's based on the, the farming campus that we, that we are, that is part of the J S Bryant School. It is one of, it used to be one of the largest dairy farms in all of the Berkshire, well, actually, in all of Western Mass. And it was a good thing, sort of, but for the environment, it was not so wonderful, it was overgrazed. And because of that, a great deal of erosion has happened. And so we give that as an example to the students and say, we need your help, we need to be researchers together to make change for this. And in doing so, they are collecting data having to do with water samples, they're walking the land, they're walking the flow of the water, they're seeing where things are going, they're measuring wastewater as well as stormwater, they're taking a look at soil and so on. They would also be studying various solutions, possibilities, that other, other farms in the local area have, have taken into account, looking at national studies, taking a look at what's online and what's in, in books and so on. Together with all of that, they would be designing a sustainable solution, and they would be doing that potentially with suggesting changes in grading of land, in terracing, in different ground cover and so on. And finally, they would implement a small piece of it, and they would be, they would be testing it and eventually sharing it with the local community for, for others to understand what we are learning in our own research. The other example course we have in the, in the materials I gave you was in worldview, I'm gonna skip that in the interest of time, but you are more than welcome to ask any questions after I'm done about that. But again, it follows the same model that I was, that, that was talking about weaving in all of these, weaving in all of the standards, project-based and place-based learning with inquiry. In terms of student performance assessment, it will be, it'll be heavily formative as, as well as summative assessment. All students will get grades, but we will be doing assessment as the learning process is happening. And so there will be shared questioning between the teacher and the student, there will be, you know, self-assessment, peer assessment, as well as teacher assessment, goal setting with rubrics, as well as trying to understand key moments in the student's coursework where it's time to truly understand what they know, how they know it, and so on, through, through projects, through portfolio assessment, presentations, and obviously exams. So the other part of the materials we gave you to show curriculum equivalency was also taking two example Massachusetts standards areas and basically showing how our courses could map to those, to those areas. And, and no, you're not expected to read that, you have to read it, and this other thing, but this is just examples. But the idea here is that we show that in, in many of these standards, at least one, if not more of our courses actually can be applied to, to a standard. We also give an example of the course context of what a project might be like and suggest possible materials. And, and we, we pull from a lot of online government sources as well as, as well as national nonprofit work and, and certainly books as well. And we also are using Khan Academy's, Khan Academy's materials and the OpenStack's textbooks as an anchor for, for math and science as well. An example of showing what, how a standard could be translated is here, physics, a physics third level standard is, has to do with designing a device that, that works given, what do you call it, converting basically one form of energy to another. We, we suggest focusing on renewable energy for that device, and the students design and look and to, to figure out how to design this based on a number of the, the other standards that they've been working with, having to do with science and math. And eventually, they create what they do in terms of models, and they are presented at the Creative Science Fair on the grounds. We also have in terms of, you know, and there are eighty four standards that we, we have examples for there, but we also have English Language Arts and Literacy, and, and examples here of how these might be applied to our courses. So for example, one of the standards asks, suggests that we evaluate and art and have the students understand claims and understand the reasoning behind them and the validity, and we suggest to do this in the context of understanding homelessness among teams that report being in the L G B T Q plus community. There is quite a high, there is a, quite a high degree of homelessness than you would expect in this community. So we look at possible materials by looking at a book with case studies about students, we look at, we look at a report, a national report by nonprofit organization, we look at journals that have to do, that show research from, in this area. So I could go on forever, but I'm not going to, but what I, I am gonna say is that I'll stop now and we'll have a discussion, but it gives you a taste of the kinds of things that, that would be happening with, with the J S Bryant School. The J S Bryant School is poised to create a curriculum that is rigorous and meaningful to students that need it, and, and we are excited to see how we can all work together to make this happen, so I thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, questions?
Is there any cost to the district?
Cost to the district? In, so, okay, I'm gonna ask Ben to come over here, our COO.
One thing I should mention is that we are a nonprofit school, we are established as a fire one C three. So it operates, will operate independently, and there's no direct cost to any other organization for our existence. We expect, we will, we are developing all kinds of, just like we were just talking about, a wholesome budget with all kinds of inputs. And tuition, we will have private pay students, and some students will be, we expect will be placed through the public school system, and that will be negotiated. And that will be negotiated with DESI and with whatever day rate they negotiate. And then those place students that go through the IP process will be placed and go through the county and state payment center for private school.
What about for like IEP students or something like that? Are you going to provide all the services or do you draw from our district?
I'm sorry, I'm involved, I only heard part. What about IEP students?
IEP students or special needs students that you accept them, do they, you know, from out of town, from out of district? Does that then become a burden on us?
No.
Allison, you want to cover?
Okay, go ahead, Pepper.
I have three kids in our district. One is an awesome IEP student. So yes, we would handle IEP students without drawing on the district significantly. Really, the cost is if you send us kids, great.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, questions?
The first year, there'll be 36 students. And where, they're going to come from the area? How are they going to get there?
Okay, if they're private, if they're private pay students, they're going to, they're going to have their parents or some other person drive them to us. And within an hour's radius of us is quite a bit of, quite a bit of students and parents that would be able to do this. If this happened to be a student placed by the district with us, then it would, then there would be some negotiation on transportation for the student to get to the school.
That's a lot of cars and a lot of driving.
I understand that. Eventually, we would like to not be just a 36-person school. We'd like to, within the next 10 years, we'd like to be 150 students. And by doing so, that would be able to make it so that we could create a busing system for our own school. But as small as we are starting, we won't be able to.
That's what I was wondering if you'd have a van at least initially.
Well, we will have a van to get us between the, our two, seven minutes, you know, between the two campuses, but it won't, but no, they won't be picking up students.
Do you?
Yes.
The skills-based learning, I think, is a great model for students that don't fit the typical classroom, for whatever reason. At the end of that time with your school, how do they integrate back into, say, if they want to go to higher ed somewhere else? What's that process like? How, how do you envision that working out for them?
Yeah, well, any students that are in the public school system, I mean, that's a great question. Any, there, any students that are come and are placed from the public school system actually have to take the standardized tests that every other school, that every other school kid has to, okay? That said, we are already talking to a number of different universities that may be pipeline places for our students, that are not necessarily traditional places. For example, Hampshire College, okay, is very project-based. And in fact, I had conversations already with some of the leadership there about the possibilities. And so we are, we are going to be looking at pipeline schools as well as we believe that the students will get, will get what they need because we're going to be heavily following the standards of Massachusetts.
But only those IEP students from the district would be then receiving the standardized test? Is that correct?
Right, only, yes, they're not, anybody that's private, that's a private school student, they're not allowed to take the standardized test, okay? But we believe that the curriculum that we are shaping is rigorous and will be, and through, through student performance assessment should be able to take them to a college of their choice and/or a career of their choice. Because some of these students are not going to go to college immediately. And so we want to make it so that this is a career-ready program. And so that's how we're sort of thinking. But great question, thank you.
Charles?
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit, I understand the distinction, but it is sort of a curious circumstance that I would feel might possibly separate students that have to take the MCAS versus those that cannot. And I'm just, you know, curious how you might plan to handle that.
Well, what's interesting is that I've got, I've got parents saying, how come they don't have to take the MCAS? So, you know, how come I, how come my kid has to, you know? So to be honest with you, it's not quite what you think it is.
Well, I, that's, that is what I would have expected, but I'm just curious how you handle the.
What we're going to handle is, is that we will be doing rigorous summative assessment throughout, okay? And that parents and teachers are going to be learning partners with those students. And so those students should truly understand what they're learning, how they're doing and how they're reaching their goals. So we hope that honestly, the standardized test is, is just, you know, oh yeah, those guys, those folks are just going off to do that for a little while. Okay, we're not going to make a big deal out of differences if you will. Yes?
So I'm just wondering if there had been discussion around when your school is expanding, if it's, if you're looking at like a residential-based setting as well? I mean, it sounds like you're talking about like a therapeutic day school type setting now, but are you thinking of expanding it further?
Well, it's funny you should say that because I have the slide that actually tells you that what would be the rest of the day if they, you know, if they did stay. And we had originally imagined starting as a residential therapeutic high school, but realized actually it was going to take us a lot longer to start due to facility development, due to curriculum development and student life development. So we chose, we chose a path that's much more expedient, but we have not lost the goal and it still sits there, right there. And the idea is that, you know, they're going to stay for one, after you're done with, after everyone is done with the farm, we're eating dinner, we're having evening clubs, we're continuing our work on the projects that we worked on during the day. We would have some downtime to just relax and then lights out. And they continue. Even if we get to 150 students, not all of them will be residential. In fact, we believe the majority of our students will always be day students, but that there will be a significant component of residential, of residential students in the future, okay? And unnamed time because my COO is going to come and strangle me if I say, bye, this time, we're going to.
How hard it was to raise.
Don't listen to me. Yes, exactly. So, but it is, there are, as you might imagine, people are reaching out to us from all over the country wanting to actually find out that this is a residential school.
And those would be shared between private funding and then cost shares?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I, we've got somebody living in a, in what do you call it? Immobile home waiting, like traveling around Massachusetts waiting for us to open, okay? So we, it's, it's shocking, but people really, really want this school. And some are saying they're going to move to Massachusetts as soon as we're open.
Well, it's not shocking.
I know, it's, that is what it comes down to because of what's going on in the rest of the country. Thank heavens we live in Massachusetts, so, yes.
How are you ensuring equivalency in curriculum? Granted that it seems like you're still in process of, is this a collaboration with DESI? Do they get the final stamp of approval?
Yes, they do.
Typically work, so.
Yes.
Okay, so I know that we have tools to, that we can use to assess and sort of evaluate the curriculums that we're using and their effectiveness. I'm curious, what, how you plan to approach?
We actually, we looked at, we looked at your examples and what we will do, as we're developing the curriculum, we will do model testing with, of the, of model, of modules of the curriculum to assess how we're doing, what we're doing, if this is equivalent and so on. So yeah, we actually, I'm putting my professor hat back on. And it's, it will be part of the research of scanning of the curriculum. So yeah, no, and obviously, you know, we have a whole part of the state to work with in terms of DESI to think about, to get to the rest of it. But yes, we take it very seriously for obvious good reasons. Yes?
Well, I have two questions. First off, when it comes to the four-year, it's everyone fills every, every year throughout the four years. What would that look like for, would you accept students who are coming in partway or whether you only accept them at ninth grade?
No, we actually, the nature of a therapeutic school is that we have to accept them when they're, when they're in need of our school. So what we will do is, we will accept them from ninth grade until 11th grade, but not in 12th grade. We believe that this curriculum cannot work well if it's, if it's less than two years. And so we hope that our students will stay with us for as long as makes sense for them and we have a full curriculum that they can graduate with. You know, and so we will obviously test them as to, you know, and assess them as to where they are in their curriculum and then place them at the level that they need to be at.
And then secondly, I should have started with this. This sounds like an incredible opportunity for students in the LGBTQ plus community. Personally, my, my sister had a very dear friend who really would have benefited from this. Sadly, he took his own life about 10 years ago. So this is something that's very near and dear to my heart. But in that inclusion, as students of this age group come into their own, if someone has identified as, as within the community, if they feel that they no longer are part of the community, would they be asked to leave?
No, we won't ask any students to leave. It's, and we're not going to, we're not going to get someone to test them to say, oh, you're in the LGBTQ community. It, it's, we have to accept what parents and students are telling us. And, and we know that our kids today are fluid in our, in their identities, in their orientation. And we have to accept that. And, you know, and if they're, if they come into our community as how they present and they change, that is, that's so be it, okay? But we do know that if somebody comes to us, you know, not, you know, we're, so I'm going to end that. I'm just going to say. I could just picture myself digging myself a hole, anyway.
Ellen, online has a question.
Oh, great.
So, well, not really a question. I just want to remind the committee that the only thing that we are going to evaluate is whether we're okay with this school existing within our district. So these are all great questions and we asked several of these at Curriculum Council Committee when they came to present to us. But for our purposes, it's like when Ridge's school wanted to open. Are we okay with them existing within our territory, so to speak? And, and I also want to address, um, yes, we could have transfers from our district going to J.S. Bryant School, but it's only if, for those kids who are looking, who's, they can't just up and say that they want to go because they don't feel comfortable in our schools anymore. There has to be documented, there has to be IEP anxiety, depression, and documented that all other avenues have been exhausted and that we've, that it's mutually agreed upon that this would be the best placement for that particular child. But they'll be accepting private school students and possibly transfers from other school districts within the area. And I, I just wanted to also say, I don't see actually a vote on here this, on the agenda this time around. So can we actually vote on this tonight? Or are we going to be violating an open meeting law?
No, actually, the intent is to get the presentation from the J.S. Bryant School. We asked the questions, we have time to research it. So at the next meeting, we'll have the vote at the next meeting. So people can stew over the presentation and the information you gave and then we'll, we'll vote next, next meeting. Okay?
Well, thank you for those two points. And yes, obviously, there's much more work to be done with the state before anything else goes on, having to do a placement. This is, this, we, we just would be honored to be a part of the school district here.
Thank you. Allison, one more? When are, when are you expecting to try and open?
Fall 2025.
Well, that's pretty good. Well, congratulations, nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Next meeting, we will, it'll be on the agenda for a vote.
Great, and we will send, we will send this slide to you.
Okay. Ellen, do you have anything else for curriculum?
No, our next meeting is March 13th at 7:00 PM via Zoom, where we will be getting an update from the Curriculum Council on the K through A yearly curriculum. We will also be getting, presenting, having a presentation on our winter benchmarking and we will be reviewing the next year's school calendar.
Okay, thanks. So back to our regularly scheduled programming. Well, Student Affairs, I don't think A and Olivia are here. So we'll go to the financial report, warrants.
We don't have any warrants.
Gifts and donations and grants.
So there are a couple of motions here. The first is authorization of scholarship donations. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the following donation totaling $500 as recommended by the town, by the district treasurer. It's $500 for the Martin Phillips Scholarship from Anne Phillips.
We got a motion and second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese? Dr. Craft Reese? Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, approval of Neseckus Regional Middle School eighth-grade class fundraising event.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the dine to donate fundraiser scheduled for March 7th, 2024 to raise money for the eighth-grade class's end-of-year field trip.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on this one? Please.
What is the eighth-grade field trip? Where are they going?
It's for Panera. They're going. Oh, eighth-grade field, sorry. They're going to, they're going to High Meadows. And it's, they have all sorts of different activities. And I think, what I guess I would say about the activities is it's really kind of a, a time for them to build, I don't want to say build their social emotional skills, but it is more social emotional skill building per se, celebrating the, the end of the year together. And it's, it's a great place to connect for, for all of them off-campus.
Bonn?
And I'm assuming that the dine to donate locations will be publicized so we can all.
Make sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, approval of La Colma Regional High School Class of 2024 fundraising event.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the W pageant fundraiser in April, date to be determined, to raise money for the class of 2024.
I'll second it. Okay, thank you. Motion and a second. Any questions on this one? What's a W pageant?
So this, this was more tradi, I think traditionally more Mr. W kind of, and then it's become more non, not really gender-specific. So the kids thinks it's a lot of fun.
All right, any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr., Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. That's it for that. So next up was, we don't have any minutes to approve. So superintendent's report?
So I don't have a lot to say. The only thing, I guess the highlight for me was that we did welcome the Massachusetts Secretary of Education to the Rokona Civility Assembly today. And it was, it was an honor. The kids did an amazing job. They really highlighted the group, No Place for Hate. What made, what I went back to was when that group was probably had, barely had five students, 10 at the most. And now it's a peer-led group of probably close to 50 students. The vice president of the chapter spoke and helped me introduce the secretary. It was very impressive. The students provided a skip. And the, the message really was about compassion, honoring students of all identities. The secretary reminded us that we're really, that the work isn't done and that we are in this together and we have work to do, but we really are only as strong as we are together. And that was a very strong message on his part and message to the students, message to all of us, but really lifted up the work that we've been doing here, the work that the students have been doing at the high school. And it was very energizing and quite an honor for us, all of us. So I'll send, I'll try to send some pictures in my next superintendent's report.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Next up is the report of the chair. So first up is the school committee vote on amended regional agreement. So thank you all. There's been a flurry of activity, obviously, around this with all the towns putting in and you, all you guys input. And I appreciate everybody's input that came to this. We really are, one of the reasons why we want to vote on accepting the language as it is now tonight, or amend it if need be with, with this, is because we need to get them on the annual town meetings to get this approved. And with the vacation week next week and the next time we have a meeting, it's quite a ways off. So we need to get this going right away so we can get it out to DESI and get it approved before the annual town meeting votes. So there's been a ton of input and what we've done is tried to get everybody their marked up copies and the latest, the last inputs that we had this week into the final document that we can vote on tonight to accept this, to move it on, to submit it to DESI. And they may came back with changes as well, but frankly, I think we're at a stage where this is a good place to put it. I will say, and I mentioned this to the Hinsdale Town Select Board last night, that in this new agreement, there are two, two review steps. At five years, there's a, a review to make sure everything is, we're still operating like we say we're operating, that sort of thing, to take a look at the agreement. And then there's a mandatory tenure, opening up the committee again for a full review. So there's actually measures in there to keep looking at this as opposed to in the past, I don't know really when it was, how it was updated, but it was updated piecemeal over the last 40 years plus, whatever it is. 1958 was when it started. So it was just piecemeal all along. Now we have kind of the, a mandatory look at it every five years to us, to review it, and every 10 years to open it up to the full committee for the seven towns. So whatever's, whatever's in there now, I would say in 1958, it was carved in stone, pretty much, but now it's not. I think we have a chance of looking at it regularly. I know there's some things that folks wanted in there that the ad hoc committee did not agree to put it in or didn't go down that far. But, and, and that's something that I, you know, mentioned again to the towns last night, was, you know, the vote was the big impetus for opening this up to begin with. And essentially, you know, they, we got the, Hinsdale got language that they, their members pushed for, got that into the agreement. But basically, we have to follow state law. So they got as much as we could go without going to state law. So I don't know if there's any more feedback on this, but if there are, open it up to the committee here on, if you want to add more or make amendments to what we have here before we submit this to DESI. I would say when we submit it to DESI, I'm not sure, you know, if they come back with changes, you know, we'll have to approve those changes before we go send it to the town. So, so, you know, this is a, this is kind of a first pass out there. So any questions, concerns? Bonnie?
I did read the various documents that were sent to us and I just have one question. I'm looking at section six and there's something in blue says section RD1. And I don't know if that was, if that's going to stay or go. This is our final document. And it also, in section eight, it also, there's something in blue. So I wasn't sure if that was.
All right. I would, I would imagine that there's, there may be highlights of like language that isn't, you know, that the computer doesn't recognize.
Okay, all right.
So it's saying, hey, you should edit this because it's not a real word?
Yeah.
I don't know, but if you.
Just asking because things were in blue and purple and.
I would also say there's probably some grammatical errors in there and things like that, but, you know, that hasn't been caught.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with you.
So this revision allows or encourages changes as the need arises. One doesn't have to wait until five years. It just assures that it will be reviewed every five years. That's not to preclude changes that are needed or if there's some event or change and somebody joins the region or we're fed up with something, that it's, can be changed at that point.
So the piecemeal can go on, but if there's no piecemeal, we're still going to look at it five years and 10 years. Yeah. Todd?
I was going to mention what Dick did and also say that this has been sent out to DESI at several stages throughout the whole process. So they have looked at, not the document in its entirety, but they have looked at all the sections already. So it should expedite hopefully their review.
Yeah, hopefully. Anybody else? Can I get a motion to approve to move this, submit this to DESI?
Second.
Okay. Other questions around? So.
I have a question as much as a comment. I know from my town, there was quite a bit of discussion about the rushed feeling of all of this and specifically not getting the information back out about recommendations on this and just reviewing everything all at once. I feel like I have a pretty good view of this at this point, but I know that they were having comments on not being, feeling like they had enough time to see comments from other towns as well.
So I had that same address last night at my town. And essentially, what I said was, the regional ad hoc committee spent a year and a half going through this. And whatever they did or did not bring up, you know, they, they went through the whole agreement. So there's some things that they did not bring up. Town's bringing up some great questions, but, and you know what? We can continue to make a change to it if they want to address that. What, where we're at now, in the interest of time, we have to get this till we can get it on the annual town meetings. Those, those suggestions about voting methods and that sort of thing, those are great questions. They're not, you know, they're not, we're not ignoring them, but in this, in this version, we're, we're going there. The, the regional ad hoc committee didn't think that was important. So they didn't address it. In a, maybe they did. I don't really know. Todd, did they address that and people who voted? I don't really know.
Voting, yeah, addressed that several times.
So basically.
And just to add to that, each one of the towns had several representatives.
Right, right.
That were part of the committee and involved in the committee. So it's kind of surprising to hear that from Windsor because Windsor was very involved in the committee.
Doug McNally was very involved and he came back several times telling, at least the select board what was going on, but.
I think, you know, like in my town, the select board changed completely since when this, our committee started. So their, their questions were, you know, already addressed, but, you know, they hadn't heard it, right? So it's not saying that they can't ask for those changes and they can and pursue those, but for this agreement where we're at now, in order to get this on the annual town meetings, we really need to move forward in the interest of time. So.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Barbara.
I just want to reiterate what Todd said. We had representatives from every town. And part of our responsibility as a committee was to go back to our towns and let them know what was going on. So I really feel strongly that we had the opportunity to do it. Did we do it as much as people wanted? That's, you know, we can never satisfy everybody, but I think we did a really good job in the year and a half that we were working on this. And I just wanted to say once again, thank you for Todd's leadership in this. It really worked as well as it did because of Todd. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I second that. Thanks, Todd. Dave?
Yeah, so the, the comments and questions and requests from the towns, they got sent in, they, they went to us, they went to our attorney, they got reviewed, either incorporated or rejected.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so they weren't ignored. They were.
Right.
They were addressed and responses went back to the towns regarding those, their specific issues.
Yeah, that's right. There was a lot of, there was, there was a lot of stuff that, like what Windsor was bringing up and Beckett brought it up and Hinsdale brought it up, that, you know, weren't, they were addressed by the ad hoc committee, but not to the satisf, or to the satisfaction or those folks weren't, didn't realize how it was brought up. So the committee addressed those things, but it wasn't in the, in the results. These people are bringing it up now at the last minute. So that's why I'm saying we can look at it later. But at this point, the committee put their document out there and we're going to go forward with that document with the changes that we were able to make recently. You were going to say something, Dave? Did you have a, okay, good. All right. Any, any other questions, Tom? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
With, as, as, as the law changes, Mass General law changes, obviously, we always follow the law. How did those changes get incorporated into this document along the way? Like, would it have to go back to towns to be amended, to approve the amendment as the law changes? Or we just hit that at the five or 10 year mark? Just curious. I, I don't recall talking about that, but.
Well.
Just curious.
Go ahead, Todd.
I would say for the most part, David, we tried to cite Mass General law when we referenced anything like that. So I would think that if the law changed and we cited that law, then it should be covered. But you're right, if the law completely changed, it would probably have to be reopened up, amended and approved again.
Thank you.
I think that's also covered in section one though, isn't it? Such that in between the two, we just go by law.
Yeah. Anything else? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your efforts on this. Todd especially and all committee. Thank you very much.
I will not be the chair in 10 years.
Come on, man. Okay. The only other thing, there's the annual town meeting dates, and I have an update from Hinsdale last night. They changed it to May 15th.
I have an update. Peru's meeting will be June 1st, 2024, 6:00 PM. Location and town to be determined.
News on the, that's it. Okay, that's all I have. So next up is, actually, we went through curriculum. So finance is up next.
We have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 29th, 6:30 PM. Yep.
Okay. How about policy?
We also have not met since last week. Our next meeting is on March 6th at 6:30 at Nescus.
Personnel?
No report.
All right. Safety and wellness?
We haven't met since last week either, so we will be meeting on the 28th.
Yeah, Dave?
Just something for safety and wellness. I had seen recent news reports that CDC is looking to revise their COVID isolation guidelines, which would kind of mirror what California, I think Oregon is doing, which is basically just 24 hours after you no longer have a fever. So it would just be back to essentially normal for any other thing. I just ask that we pick that up as soon as possible and get our guidelines changed. Hopefully we don't have to wait for CDC because they're, they're looking at like April, I think is the report, but I just encourage us to do that as quick as possible. So.
Don't forget that.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing to report on the Wacona building project. We just did the regional ad hoc and superintendent ad hoc.
We have not met, but we are going to be meeting with Leslie on February 26th at 7:00 AM.
Okay. All right. Then any old business? Any new business? Remarks for the good of the committee?
May I?
Oh, go ahead, Barbara.
I just wanted to thank Leslie for programming today. It was run so well. And I actually walked out of there with some hope in this crazy world that our young people are doing the right thing and we're providing them with all the good information that they need to be successful. So thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Dave?
So I don't forget. I think next year, at the public hearing, we ought to make the screen visible to the public.
We'll agree with it.
And it really is, this is for the public. One would expect comments and questions mostly to come from the public. We saw all of this and we actually voted on it a week ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Maybe the venue's not right for this or move the screen. I agree with that for sure. Yeah. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Case?
Okay.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.